Are we hot over there?
Yeah, okay. I want to welcome everybody to the December the 19th, regular scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting here in the Feniac Springs. If will Pastor Ben Barton from Life Changers Church International, if you'll come forward, please, if they want to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today. We honor you in the position you hold. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day we come before you in the name of Jesus. And now, Father, we ask you, Lord, for our commissioners, that you grant them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding today for this meeting. We pray over this meeting, Lord, that everything will be done decently and in order and in honor to you and for the benefit of our county. Now, Father, we thank you for our commissioners. We call them blessed, and now, Father, we ask you to give them an understanding heart in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ben, for that. Let's see, I think Jason Colano, who's a school board member, is present today, but he's also here for staff. Okay, Jason. All right. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one deletion under the consent agenda as item number seven, which is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the State of Florida Department of Transportation Small County Outreach or SCOP grant agreement for County Road 185, Gum Creek Church Resurfacing Project in the amount of $2,837,032. That project is still moving forward. There's just a couple of things we needed to add before we were ready for your approval, one being a resolution, but we'll have it for you, I believe, on the 9th of January for your approval, for your consideration.
Is it a motion to approve the agenda with additions?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time is public comment time. This is in reference to just the agenda item, whatever it is. Time to speak to that if you're unable to attend the rest of the meeting. However, I'll just acknowledge that we will allow public comment for each agenda item as we go through the agenda. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there any items from the board they wish to be removed from the consent agreement, or agenda, rather? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next up is the Waste Management EALs. I acknowledge in my conflict of interest, I filed the proper form with the clerk and will abstain from the vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item we would ask you to consider is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract 018-007 for the U.S. Highway 98 meeting and right-of-way maintenance from the west end of County Road 31A to Mackbio Road. The results of that invitation were presented to you yesterday. We're sorry for the late timing, but it was pretty critical. We get this approved today so we can continue that without interruption. There were two bids, Harper Landscaping for $50,870 and Brightview Landscaping for $136,608. We would request that you award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign the contract with Harper Landscaping as they were the lowest responsible responsive bidder.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in... I'm sorry, excuse me.
I didn't jump in quick enough. Is there any reason there's such a disparity in the two? $50,136, is there something that Harper's going to not do that Brightwell will? I apologize, I didn't jump in quick enough, but it's...
They, Harper met the specifications that we laid out. I didn't review it, but I'm assuming that there was probably not because we didn't ask for anything beyond what was in the specifications in the bid documents. So, in the review process, we would have reviewed the value of those had there been any, but it is a recommendation that we go with Harper as the lowest responsible responsive bidder.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract number 018-005 for the 38-395 traffic signal installation with Murdoch Investments LLC, which is doing business as Griffin Traffic Signals for $114,349. This is part of the improvement project there at the 38-395 intersection. This will allow us to move forward with the traffic signal at the appropriate time, so we would recommend your approval.
So moved.
Second for discussion. Buddy, may I speak? I've got Buddy up here.
Buddy Wright, Walton County Public Works.
In the description says time is of the essence. Are we talking about because it's off-season or that we've purchased something? I see that we've purchased...
Yes.
Acquired the traffic signal controller and everything, so it's...
Yes, ma'am. My understanding is the material has been purchased. Now, this is, this contract is for the installation of the materials we've purchased, so just for the installation.
And what the urgency is, we're trying to get off-season?
Yeah, we're trying to get it done during the off-season. If y'all been down there, there's a lot of work going on down there now, so that's, trying to get it done as close to the end of this slow season as we can.
Any other questions?
And by your approval, that will allow us to move immediately into the installation when we're ready from a logistical standpoint.
How's regional on them coming with their moving? Are they on schedule?
Yes. It's, that's a very difficult intersection, as y'all know, and they're, they're down there working now. We've been working with them these last couple of weeks to try to facilitate those utility moves. There's a lot more utility moves to happen in the future, but just what's gotta happen in Phase 1 is underway now, so. Been challenging, for sure.
Thank you, Buddy. Is any public comment? Seeing none? A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is a request to approve the South Walton TIP for Tax Increment Financing Budget. This is from Public Works, submitted by Charlie Cotton. Staff has budgeted and identified a number of projects as reflected on the attached list. These projects have been reviewed and vetted by staff, and we would request your approval as we move forward. As you're aware, in previous years, we've budgeted $4 million from a special taxing district in South Walton that allows us to take part of the incremental increase in property taxes and utilize in that district, and this is a $4 million appropriation of the projects that we would recommend moving forward to be funded through that tax increment financing district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments from the board discussion? Anything from the audience? Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, if, with your approval, I would yield to Commissioner Anderson on the next item for his presentation.
Yes, I would like to request to allocate $600,000 from the District 5 Recreational Plat Fee Account for the Hallett Improvements at Helen McCall Park, and that is a motion.
I'd like to second for a discussion.
So moved.
Because number 15, 16, and 17 are all Helen McCall Park, can someone please just, I've received some emails, can someone just please give me a little bit of background on Helen McCall, because this is a large, a large number, and I'm coming up with a pretty good total.
It is a substantial project.
Even pilot math, it's, it's a big number.
Yeah, it is a big number, and it's, it's a big project, but County's been working on this for, well, we applied for those Army Corps permits to reorient the field four years ago, so it's been an ongoing process for some time, but basically, the, the west side of Helen McCall has been renovated. You know, we've got the multi-use field, the new lights, the mission play park, the bathroom, the baseball complex. Now, you move over on the east side of the facility, you know, that's the older side of the park, so this proposal here would, you know, basically upgrade the, the west side of the park, where basically wipe out everything that's there now, put new lights in, new concession stand press box. Where we have one field now, we'll have two, that increase our green space, and there's approximately 1,200 participants that use this park through the rec leave, and if y'all need some more information on that, Shane's here, can speak to it, but, but basically, you know, this'll get us where we need to be at Helen McCall Park moving forward over the next, you know, 10, 15 years, and this would basically be the last big renovation at Helen McCall Park. It catches us up, you know, like I said, the west side of the park's been, been renovated and upgraded, and this would conclude that.
And if you add this with the new sports park facility, which is a big...
Right.
...plot as well, it substantially increases our capacity to support the growth in South Walton, especially in the youth football and soccer leagues that we see, you know, a substantial increase of volume of those participating. So, as Buddy said, this has been in works for quite some time. We're pleased that it's at the point we can get it to move it forward.
And I don't know how much room pickleball takes, but I get a lot of calls on, anyone getting, he knows I'm...
We're, we're working, I spoke necessarily this morning, we're working on Legion Park and doing some work at Driftwood on the pickleball.
Thank you.
Well, in, in, in the south end, we're probably 20 years behind in, in youth sports, and one of the things I met with Shane when I first took office, and he was telling me how it was such a problem to set up the leagues with so little facilities, and, and this is what this is. This is part of the plan to get South Walton up to date in youth, youth sports.
And you said one of the permits you've been working on for about four years. This isn't just an ongoing...
Well, yeah, this particular portion of the west side of the park, you know, there, this has been a project that we've been trying to reorient in fields, and it, and it took us four years to get that core permit to be able to do it, so we've been working on it that long.
Ms. Nipper, I am so glad that you brought up pickleball, because I have two areas in my district that if I had some recreational plat fee money, which I don't have...
Neither do I, now.
That I could be able to upgrade Driftwood Park, for example, and, and also do something at Legion Park if I perhaps, anybody wanted to be Santa Claus and help me out. I'm just putting that out there.
I've got like $26.
Commissioner, get, get staff and...
Is any other comments from the board?
Yes.
Is any public comment? Mr. Osborne? Be sure you identify yourself, spell your last name for the clerk. Thank you.
For the record, Alan Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-I-N-E. Yeah, I worked on this years ago. I coached out there for probably eight or nine years, and we stood in the water and tried to coach, and we took our kids to Destin because there was no ball fields, and we just quit altogether almost. We had to resurrect the Pee-wee football, Trey Waldrup and Lisa Waldrup resurrected it because we had no football program. I would say this money need to be spent, and I, I worked with Cindy Meadows on this when she came back into office to make sure this got going. Both those fields are needed, but I'll tell you what, you need parking also, you probably need to work with the state and put some kind of ecological parking across that mosquito ditch. We've needed that for 25 years, and when these are built, it won't be enough. So, if you think 600 grand is enough, you got a serious, serious problem if you don't drive around and see what is still unbuilt and what you have platted. To think that all those people won't have kids is crazy. We don't have enough for youth to do in this county in the south end. There's not enough beach access, there's not enough ball fields, and what's gonna happen is they're gonna get in trouble. We're gonna end up with a high-density area in South Walton in 20 years, and when the kids don't have nothing to do, y'all gonna be upset, and the community's gonna be upset because they're gonna get in trouble. So, I don't care how much we need to spend. You need to be taxing some of these developments that you're left and right, and you need to be buying as much land and ball fields as you can for people to be outdoors and not in trouble. So, because if you want, you want them to stay good citizens, you gotta give good citizens someplace to be good citizens, and that starts on the ball field. So, approve this and a lot more for the south end because, like I said, go count empty lots, and as Ms. Commander points out, she doesn't have any money in her fund because most of her money's up here in their slow building. So, you gotta tag the places that do and put these facilities in, and I don't think you charge the developers enough for these big impacts. The, the citizens of Driftwood, I think, donated, I helped raise the money, it was almost 100 grand to put the Driftwood Park in, but you only taxed Sandestin, what was it in the public records request? $13,000. We all came up with it out of our pocket while the county denied it was even a park. I had to prove y'all owned it. Let's get serious about doing something for kids. That's who's paying the taxes, is these families. That's who's working, and these houses are ridiculously affordable, unaffordable, and so we gotta give, they're spending all their money on property. You gotta spend your money on something for them to do.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Have a motion and a second on the floor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item for your consideration, as Commissioner Nipper just said, does involve the Helen McCall Park, and this is a request to approve, to approve and authorize the chair to sign contract 017-030 for the Helen Paul McCall Park improvements with C.W. Roberts. We awarded to C.W. at the last, I believe, his last meeting, contingent upon some value engineering that has been done, and we present to you a, a contract for your consideration and hopefully your approval. That will allow us to move the project forward and put C.W. to work and let him begin making the improvements.
What's the board's wishes? Motion?
Second.
Second. Any public comment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Last item is in regard to the lighting at Helen McCall, and this is a request to approve the purchase of the Helen McCall Park Improvement Lighting Ball Field, Ball Field Lighting Material and Installation with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in amount not to exceed $325,000. This was excluded from the C.W. Roberts contract, and that we felt that we could better negotiate the terms outside of that contract with lighting providers, and this was a result of those negotiations, so we would request your approval.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments, discussion from the board? Seeing none, is any public comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Tusa, I believe, is up.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We don't have any updates today, just I'll entertain any questions the board might have.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Tusa?
And if not, then I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and that we all have a prosperous 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody besides me, speaking of South Walton, see the, the little video, I think it was on Facebook, of the mama deer and the baby deers running across the beach, and they were like playing in the water? It's like, y'all should, you should use that for an advertisement, that was precious.
All right, number 19, I think this is Sid.
Yes. Commissioners, number 19 is a request for direction from the board regarding the Sandustin Stormwater RFQ. I need to do a little bit more research, so I'm asking, I, I know at the last board meeting, based on the direction from the board, you wanted it on this agenda, but there's a few things I need to look into, so I'm asking that we could bring this back in January, and I'll have more information for you at that time.
January, south end meeting, or when in January?
Well, the second meeting at the latest, and I only say that because obviously, I'm gonna be going out soon and Heather's gonna be coming in, so I, I don't know with that transition, she might need a little bit more time, but the second meeting in January at the latest.
Okay.
Do we need that form of motion?
Uh, if you're okay with it, I, I was just gonna make sure that we stayed on track. I wanted to bring it back to you guys to let you know the timeframe.
I, I've been... Can we really shoot for the first meeting so that's on the south end?
Commissioner Nipper, we'll do everything we can, it's just obviously with the transition, we'll, we'll do everything we can.
Okay. We'll just do what you can for the first meeting in January, if not, understanding that I think tomorrow you're going on maternity leave. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I thought so. Baby due here shortly. All right. Oh, I didn't see out there. Alan, you got some comment? Come on.
So, it's just not as easy as renewing the same contract considering a portion of it's been done.
Commissioner Nipper, so right now, we're waiting to hear from Dr. Harper, and, and I don't really have much control over when I'm gonna hear from Dr. Harper. That's, that's what I'm waiting on right now.
Mr. Osborne.
For the record, Alan Osborne. Mr. Chapman, I'd ask you to take lead on this since you were at our settlement, and that is not secret, it's a public record, and I was a settlement. I would remind you, sir, that it's been almost two years since we settled this spring, and I settled for a reason, because that's who y'all picked, and that's what y'all wanted, and I agreed to it. I have my own reasons, too. This is ridiculous. You hadn't sent him a single certified letter. We got in touch with him in an hour when we tried the other week. He said he needs the money for the survey so he can complete the calculations. He said it'd take about a week. What's so hard about this? I just, I just remind you, you know, it's far, I, I think you're in breach now for not doing what you said in the settlement, and if you're gonna be liable...
Mr. Osborne, we're not gonna, Mr. Osborne, we're not gonna discuss litigation.
This is my opinion, I'm addressing the board. She's interrupting me.
I am yielding to her.
We have a board policy not to discuss litigation, so...
Not in litigation.
Well, you're discussing our settlement agreement and reopening that litigation, so...
No, we're not, I'm not saying I've reopened any litigation, I'm asking you to finish the contract.
Okay, we'll take what you said, that's fine. You want us to finish the contract.
I would remind you.
I'm gonna yield to the council if she's having difficulties. I don't know what the difficulty...
If you wanna discuss the contract with Dr. Harper, that's okay, but we're not gonna discuss our settlement agreement or litigation.
And, and I, I got a right to discuss that, Bill. We can argue about it, or you can throw me out of here. It's a settlement agreement, it's in public record, I'm asking you to do it. You're the chairman, you were there.
That's right, I was there, and I, if we can get up with Dr. Harper, I, you say you got with him within a week or...
Got the emails, we saw, we, we called him immediately, he answered the cell phone.
Well, legal is gonna tell us where we are in this process, and I don't know what the issue is between us and getting back with Dr. Harper.
Me neither, in two years I've asked for documents. I mean, why can't you just send him a certified letter saying complete?
That's, that's what I'm gonna do, Mr. Osborne.
And, and he needs, I'm telling you exactly right here, I've read the emails, he said he needs the surveys of the ditch elevations is what he needs. It's in the email.
Okay, all right.
And we can't pay Dr. Harper without a valid contract.
Well, then put it up here for him to do it. You said...
I can't do that unless I hear from Dr. Harper, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, I just remind you that in that settlement, y'all are liable for the legal fees if you don't comply.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none? Let's see, next one up, Commissioner Commander.
I don't have a thing. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Nipper.
In the last meeting, I asked to bring, or, or we discussed, considering to amend the Walton County personnel policies, specifically the grievance, excuse me, procedures, and I formulated what I would like to be amended and added to the policies. Would you like me to read?
This whole thing?
What?
I think...
Just the bottom? What would you like, sir?
Well...
I can read fast.
We can all read this, but if you wanna put into the record the bottom paragraph, that's fine.
Okay, and to the record, just so that everyone understands, in all instances, when an individual is asked to participate in an investigation, those individuals are entitled to have a non-participating representative present, present for their interview. This representative may only observe and listen to the interview.
Okay. I got no grief with that. I've, it's, it's a policy I've worked under for decades through the sheriff's office. I see nothing wrong with having the aggrieved employee to have some person there, whether it's their mother, father, attorney, whatever, to, to be there to observe it, but it's always been in my experience in utilizing this, that person representing or coming with the employee is non-participatory. They just sit there and listen. Even an attorney doesn't even have the option to ask questions and interview and question anybody that comes before that investigation. That's my take on it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to expand a little bit, we were asked to do a little additional work at the last meeting. We, we have confirmed to the best we can at this point in time that this would not impact our insurance coverage, and that if it is part of our policy that the investigators that the insurance company would assign to the investigation would comply with our policy. I can tell you, this is not a great time of the year to be getting some real steadfast information. We believe that's the, the firm position. However, if you pass this, we will, or whether you do or don't, we will continue to have that conversation to ensure that we, that the right folks have addressed it from that perspective and that we do get a firm commitment from them, and Sid about, said that about right.
Yes, yes. So, if we hear from fact that this in any way would jeopardize our insurance coverage, again, we don't believe that to be the case right now, but we can bring it back to you so you can...
Well, I'm of the same opinion. I can't see how it could possibly impact that. We did it for decades at sheriff's office, and we had insurance, and they never challenged it or bought it.
And, and as counsel said, we don't believe that's the case, you know, but there again, this time of the year, it's, you know, a lot of... this time of the year, it's, you know, a lot of moving parts, so we just want to be sure that as we move forward, we get any further confirmation we need, we may not need any, but what we know today is that it doesn't impact the insurance, and the investigator that they would assign would comply with our policy.
So then this would be active today?
Yes.
If this was accepted?
Yes, ma'am. It's not, it's not ordinance, so it doesn't have to be, yeah, since you, if you vote on it, it becomes...
I'd like to make a motion that we add this to the chapter twelve of the grievance procedures.
Okay, is that the entire?
The entire, the entire...
I'll lead into the last, okay.
I'll second for discussion.
Go ahead.
I had asked Sid, I think after our last meeting, you know, we're talking about the individual who's filed the grievance to have somebody with them or whatever, I also suggested that as a witness, if I was called as a witness, and I might be intimidated by somebody, and just to have somebody there with me to give me moral support, I think the witness should also be able maybe to have somebody with them.
Commissioner Commander, the way the policy is drafted, any individual who participated in the investigation would be able to bring a witness with them.
I second the motion.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Commissioner Nipper?
No, sir.
All right, Commissioner Jones is absent. Mr. Anderson, you have nothing? My turn on here, the only thing I wish is everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. If you're gonna drink, don't drive, that's that old cop in me, so just try to get somebody to take you home, have a designated driver, but anyway, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. All right, have public comments? Is there any public comments at this time?
Well, here's something under...
Or did I miss something?
No, no, I'm sorry, I missed something.
All right, Ms. Bowman.
Sorry I'm late, it's impossible to get here on time from so far away.
Uh huh.
Permit number eight issued to the Walton Land and Timber Company in 1944 drilled to a depth of 5,286 feet, that's about a mile. Permit number 142, well-named Walton Land and Timber Company, a dry hole drilled in 1952 to a depth of 5,202 feet deep. There's a whole page on the Florida website that lists all of the places that have been permitted to drill, and I found lots of Walton Land and Timber Company, so I skipped to the future, because I once heard you say you like to think 20 years ahead, so I went 20 years back and I found $1.5 million gas and oil lease that you signed with the D&amp;H Oil Company, and then you immediately leased it back to yourself, which proves that you are in the oiling, gas business, so this was 95, so in 96, you changed all the setbacks from five feet to 25 feet, that wasn't just to keep innocent homeowners from harvesting virgin wood close to waterways, it was also so that you could give a man named Thomas Hicks a reason to grow plants in his yard, because with the extended setback, it made his land sort of unable to build a house on because he had wetlands going through the middle of it, so you said, okay, well, we'll let you grow plants in your yard because plants don't disturb the peace or the neighbors because they don't make noise when they grow, but over the last 20 years, he has turned into a dirt and receivership for the US DOT, and despite years of noise complaints from neighbors, the county just does nothing about it. Well, that's because you knew that you were going to be drilling into Forest Block 20 West to South this last year, so you set Thomas Hicks up to slowly turn from a plant grower, which he's grandfathered into be, and he's broken every rule there is about being grandfathered in, he's changed, he's expanded, and he is nothing like what he was given permission to be 20 years ago, but that's because you needed something really noisy and distracting right there on Chad Holly, so that when you started drilling into the forest, you could just blame the noise on Thomas Hicks, because there's rules about if you drill into the ground and it disturbs neighbors, you can't do it anymore, so this, Thomas Hicks has not only like stolen a bunch of wood out of the forest and not paid timber taxes on it, but the reason that you just find him and never fix him because he's not allowed to do what he's doing now, is because you're using him as a cover to cover the activities, the illegal drilling activities, because, by the way, I did not find any Florida-issued permit that gives you permission to drill into the forest or any part of the Chocahatchee Key, so anyways, I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, planning and development. Is Mac here, or, yeah, there is, okay. I think the first thing we have on here is request to reappoint John Roberts as a Planning Commission District Two seat, Mac.
Good morning, commissioners, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R, and yes, sir, that is our first item, we request that Mr. Roberts be reappointed.
What's the board's wishes? So moved?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, sir, the next item is a request from staff to advertise and hold public hearings in January to amend the Land Development Code related to single-family residential stormwater requirements, we've got a brief presentation on this particular item, if you could indulge us on that.
Well, this is, what would we gain from the public presentation if we're just gonna schedule and hold a public hearing sometime in January? Is there any reason why we want to see this now?
It's at your pleasure, sir.
Yeah.
We can move ahead if you'd like.
What's the board's wishes?
You're the chairman.
I understand that.
I make a motion, we move forward the public hearings on this matter.
Second.
Any public comment? I appreciate what you did on that, Jason, but if we're gonna hear it once, we didn't hear it all at the same time.
He looks good today.
He does, you rest up.
And Mac and Jason, so you know, I've had some emails of people concerned that we should have this at the south end, so the presentation would be fantastic, some people are concerned that, they were concerned it was up here as opposed to being on the south end, so...
Well, it's on the agenda today up here just to set it, we'll set it to the south end.
I explained it to them.
Yeah, this was just to begin the public hearing process.
So, if you got a date certain, anybody, DeeDee?
There should be a date certain, do you have dates proposed?
While she's coming up, can we back up just a minute to Mr. Roberts? I want to put out that in District Four, Mr. Anderson would like to remove himself from the Planning Commission, so if anybody in District Four would like to serve on the Planning Commission, contact my office. Okay.
Okay, we need to try and set a date certain.
We talk about a board meeting day?
Well, the first date would be a Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
We're looking at doing the January Planning Commission.
January the fourth?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
That would be the first public...
So you're gonna go there and then come to us, right?
Right.
Two hearings, two...
January the 11th at the Planning Commission, and then January the sixth, nope.
It'll probably be February.
It'll have to be the first meeting in February for the south end, so it'd be February the 13th.
All right.
And it would have, it'll have two public hearings in front of this commission, so we would have a meeting in the south end as well as in the north end.
Okay.
Two readings.
February date, DeeDee?
February the 13th.
Okay.
So would you put it on January the 23rd as well, for the north end?
I guess not, if we're having trouble with that, let's...
February the 13th and February the 27th?
Yep.
And both of them at South Walton Annex?
No, one will be here.
February 27th is in the north end.
All right.
Is that okay, Commissioner Nipper, or would you rather do it?
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure that the person that's concerned thinking it's only going to be in the south end, that they know that, excuse me, only in the north end, that it will be shown in the south end.
We'll probably have a workshop down there, too.
I know you will.
Yeah.
What time are we gonna do this?
We're required to have one meeting in the south end.
You'll do any regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay.
If, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for clarity, there are a number of alternatives or potential ways this thing can move, as they go to the Planning Commission, are you asking that the Planning Commission perhaps narrow those down, or hear them all and send them all on to the BCC for your consideration? I mean, it could get, the Planning Commission may be a good place to vet some of them, and it may take more than one Planning Commission meeting to get through all of them to come up with that best recommendation to the BCC, and we're good either way, just so, you know, just so staff has some clarity that when they go to the Planning Commission, exactly what are they gonna request them to do? Is that to look at all these alternatives and recommend one back to the BCC for consideration, or to recommend two, three, four, five, or all of them? To, what's there four or five?
There's four actual alternatives, the fifth one is just not changing anything, and currently, staff's recommendation is that there be a combination of those four, we believe that they're all gonna work together, and it's something that would make the stormwater regulations better, so, and during the public hearings, which is that goes, but, but Mr. Jones is correct, that there may, it may take more than one meeting at the Planning Commission if they decide anymore.
Well, my concern is when we have these types of hearings and what have you, and especially with something of this magnitude, that we always try to shove it in an hour before our regular schedule, and we know it's not enough time, so either we're gonna have to give it more time when it comes back before us, or set it for a separate date other than the board meeting, because we run into that problem with the beach activities ordinance, and we're having to move it, so...
It might be in everyone's best interest to let it go through the Planning Commission and see when they, I mean, this is one that's better, well, I guess in all cases, it's better done right than fast.
Yes.
You know, so we want to get it right when we move it out, so we, instead of trying to set a date to come back to you guys, we may need to let the Planning Commission work it, and if it takes two meetings or three meetings, or whatever it takes, make sure they've got enough time to get it right, so it doesn't get there, we're down to the 11th hour, we gotta do something.
Right.
So, maybe, maybe that would be the consideration is agenda for the Planning Commission at the first available opportunity, and when they've had opportunity to say, this is what we want to move forward to the BCC, then schedule it for you guys.
All right, how's that work for the board? You okay with that?
Me.
I think we're okay? That work?
I'd still have to do that.
Thank you.
And I think we have, just, Mr. Chairman, if you correct me if I'm wrong, we're giving staff latitude to say, Planning Commission, you can recommend all of these to the BCC, or if you want to narrow it down to one, or if you want to put a combination of them together, so that when we move to the BCC, we have a strong recommendation, is that...
That's the way I kind of envision it.
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't, I don't think so, as long as we get some unanimous consent, we'll understand what we're trying to, where we're trying to get to. Okay, great.
I say a head.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Number twenty-three.
Before I go, I wanted to say Merry Christmas to you all, and thank you for your support this year of planning, we really appreciate it, it's been a good year, thank you.
Okay, sir, I think you had a comment, come on. That was twenty-three?
Morning, Fred Tricker, T-R-I-C-K-E-R, and I just wanted to speak in support of this proposal, we think this is something that's very important, probably long overdue, and South Walton Community Council is proposing to hold a public forum on this issue, to bring the public up to speed on what the options are, try to understand the underlying issues and the recommendations that are before us, and I've communicated that with, to Chris Vinschel, and she's agreed to support that, so I think, I think this is a really good thing. I did have a couple of questions, it looks like there's basically two options on the table, one option is for Walton County to basically take care of the problem through capital projects, I assume, option two is to provide some relief to individual lot owners that want to build, where they don't have to go through the, all the hassle that we have to go through right now, so I guess my question is, are we looking at both option one and option two, where one is a long-term option, and the other one is a short-term option, is that a possibility?
Let me yield to Mac on this.
I think we're looking at all the options, aren't we, Mac?
Yes, sir, there, there are actually five considerations, one is a stormwater utility system, which we may not be ready for quite yet, but we want to consider that, two, three, and four are alternatives that we would like to consider together, and then option number five is just to continue what we're doing, and that is not a recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Tricker?
Okay, the second issue, at what point would we see specific language for the LDC for these options? Would that be presented at the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
Good, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, anyone else? Okay, number twenty-three?
Thanks, sir, that moves us to number twenty-three, this is a request to approve an amendment to the Land Development Code, or to propose an amendment to the Land Development Code, to provide us the opportunity to participate in the Florida Department of Transportation's tourist-oriented directional sign program, the genesis of this request is really from a, a golf course on west, east highway 20, that is interested in this particular program and believe they would qualify, in order for us, them to participate, the county has to amend our sign regulations to allow for this kind of sign, and to manage the process. It's intended that this would be at the advertiser's expense, but we've got to amend our regulations to provide that opportunity for them to participate, and we propose to bring this to the January Planning Commission, and then to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mac, as I understand it, this, the actual participation is between the, in this case, the golf course and the DOT, this just facilitates their ability to utilize that program, and they will be, any expense incurred will be borne by the participant.
Yes, sir.
This is similar to the sciences on the interstate advertising?
Wine, you see the winery signs?
Winery, yeah.
It's more of that type thing.
All right, all right, let me get a motion in a second, Lee.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Mac, we're just move, we're just moving forward with this, you're gonna take it to the Planning Commission and...
And then it would come to this body for two hearings, yes, sir.
We're just investigating this, and that's what I'm making my motion on.
His motion, we got a second?
I'll second.
Second, now, any comments? Lee Moore?
Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E, thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I have some question or two about this, obviously, the Scenic Corridor Foundation is, has some concern about this, are we, would this be considered, be considered as an amendment to chapter 13 of the Land Development Code, such that it would open it up for the Scenic Corridor?
Mac?
Actually, it's proposed for chapter seven, and these signs would be located in the state right of way only.
Okay, so our, our concern is just that it not, it not be considered for the Scenic Corridor, we, it seems from what I read, and I could be wrong, that any business that's off of the Scenic Corridor would be eligible for these signs, and we would hate to see that start cropping up along 98 and 331 South, really anywhere, but that's our area of focus, we've got building signs, we've got monument signs, we've got some billboards, not that many, thank goodness, due to chapter 13, we've got roadway signs, we've got traffic signs, we've got real estate signs, for lease signs, we've got all kinds of signage, and that's one of our primary goals as an organization, is to minimize signage clutter, so that's our concern about this, and if it is enacted, we would ask that at a minimum, it's accepted on the Scenic Corridor.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Mac, who made this request?
This request came from the Windswept Golf Course out on east highway 20, east of Freeport.
And they can't put a sign up based on our code right now?
That's correct.
And, and Mac, just to be clear, these are pretty much standard DOT signs?
Yes, sir.
That, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be a glaring billboard, it's gonna have a little sign that says golf course, if I understand it correct.
These would be signs that the state would erect at the advertiser's expense.
Right.
I don't expect there will be many of them, and part of what we're required to do is to... And part of what we're required to do is to create criteria for participation in this program in Walton County. So I think we can accommodate Lee's request with regard to scenic corridor, and I'm certainly not a big fan of additional signage and roadside clutter. We expect to keep this to a minimum.
Okay. Kay, you got something to say? Coy, I'm sorry.
Cory Bowman, B O W A M A N. Yeah, can you please tell me why we have a sign restriction ordinance to begin with?
Mac, why do we have a sign ordinance?
Please tell me why we have a sign restriction to begin with.
Why do we have a sign ordinance for protection of the public and for protection of the aesthetic quality of our county?
And by protection of the public, what do you mean by that?
So that only those signs that are necessary are installed, and they're installed in a safe manner.
Okay, so what's the purpose for that? Like.
Coy? You're not gonna sit here and carry on a tit for tat here?
Well, I just wanna, no, no, no. What I'm trying to establish is whether or not you all know the reason why we have the sign ordinance.
Listen to me. If you've got questions concerning that, submit them to Mac in writing and he can respond back to you. We're not gonna have this interrogation right now.
Okay, well, let me just explain because my concept was that it's because when we have a storm, everything gets torn up, and it's not just about losing the sign, it's about the sign flying into somebody else's property and doing damage.
Okay.
And that's what I was trying to see, if Mac understood, because he sounds like he's reading something out of a book that says, for the protection of the public. But if he can't explain to me what that means, then he really shouldn't have his job.
Coy, submit your responses in writing.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that it? Let's see, we need a motion and all?
There's a motion and a second, but no.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. All right, I think next up is legislative items. Mac?
Yes, sir. We have one item on this portion of the agenda, and this is the adoption hearing for the Black Creek of Northwest Florida Large-Scale Amendment. This is a request approved by ordinance, previously reviewed by Bob Beronte. This is an amendment to the future land use designation for approximately 32.64 acres from urban residential and estate residential to business park. The project's located approximately 3.25 miles east of the intersection of County Road 3280 and Highway 331. It's on the north side of County Road 330, or 3280, and it's identified by the parcel number in your package. As you may recall, Commissioners, this is the last step in the county's portion of a settlement agreement related to this particular piece of property from mid-last decade and extended a little bit earlier this year by this board. We received no objections from the state, and this is ready to move forward.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment?
Yeah, when I type this parcel number in, it doesn't show that skinny little strip along the road. It shows the big square L. So are you planning on creating a new parcel and switching the number from this large area that's mostly water to this other one? Because also, when I look this up, it says that it's completely unqualified, all for sales. No answer, right?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Mac, do you wanna, we're just changing the portion.
We're only changing the portion that is described by the legal description contained in the package. It is not the entire parcel. The parcel number will not change.
Just the future land use, Mac?
And Mac, the archaeological site and if there's, I'm assuming if there's any development, that's when the archaeological site with the 50-foot buffer, the wetland protection, the transfer density, all that will be, that's once we.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That's when those will be applied.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have only one quasi-judicial item, and this action, this item was actually continued at the last meeting to the January 9th regular BCC meeting at the South Office at 4:00 P.M.
Mac, was there notice for today's meeting?
There was a published notice for today's meeting.
Oh, I see, okay. But the mail-out notice had January 9th or had December 12th?
Those have gone out, they went out for this meeting also.
Okay, so since it was noticed for today, I, just in an abundance of caution, I would ask you guys to go ahead and vote to continue it to January 9th.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
So we have, want to wish you a very Merry Christmas and thank you for all you've done for us this year.
Okay.
Next year.
Chairman, before we adjourn, if you, indulge me just a moment. It's been an interesting year in my life, but each of you have played a special part in it and the support that you've afforded me and my family. I can't thank you enough. It's a pleasure to be a part of the Walton County family, and I just want to say thank you again for all you did for us during that time, your support, your love, your prayers, your thoughts. Extend that to our staff. So moving forward, we're looking for a great 2018 and wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and again, thank you so much.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we adjourn.